Good evening and welcome to Henry Ford College Board of Trustees Meeting. Today's meeting is a regular scheduled meeting. Today is August 26, 2024. It is 7:01. I'll call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Ambrosio?
Here.
Trustee McDonald?
Here.
Trustee Moses?
Here.
Trustee Petlicoff?
Here.
Trustee Clark?
Here.
Trustee Watts?
Here.
Chair Barry?
Here. Next item, Madam President. Madam Secretary?
Approval of minutes, approval of minutes for the following Board of Trustees Meeting, regular Board of Trustees Meeting, June 10, 2024. Board of Trustees Audit Committee Meeting, June 10, 2024. Board of Trustees Special Meeting, June 17, 2024. Board of Trustees Close Session, June 17, 2024. And Board of Trustees Building Insight Committee Meeting, June 24, 2024. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move to approve these minutes.
To approve.
The board?
Motion is moved by Trustee Ambrosio, supported by Trustee McDonald. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Are there any objections to the motion? Hearing none, please attach unanimous vote in affirmative. Next item, please.
President's items?
Thank you, Madam Secretary and Mr. Chairman. Welcome back to Henry Ford College. It feels like it's been a long time, but it's been two months since you all were with us. And I'm excited to have you here at the very beginning of our fall semester, which is off to a great start. And I have a few updates for you. And then I took the liberty of asking the chair to allow us to have a short presentation. Is that me giving us?
No, they're timing you. You're being timed.
I have a short presentation because I noticed there was a lot of your colleagues, Mr. Chairman, who were interested in the planetarium last time we were discussing it. So I've asked trustees, and the chair has obliged, that we'll have a short presentation about the planetarium, which I'm quite excited about. Before we get to that, I have a few announcements. One is that we, as is tradition, had our state of the college presentation and meeting almost a week ago today. And I appreciate trustees Thorpe and Petlicoff attending, and trustee Thorpe for making comments. I appreciate the support from all the board trustees, but particularly those who saw what was, I think, a record-breaking attendance. I told the crowd that I knew why they were there, and it was the really great warm breakfast that Bruce Wall and Jonathan Thompson made for them. But it was also nice to have them hear from our trustees. And if you've been back on campus at all, trustees, you'll see that this campus, in year after year after year since 2020, you'll see more and more people on campus. Students are showing that they value our campus by their foot traffic and their enrolling in classes. And the latest update on enrollment is that, looking back from this time last year, we're up a little more than 2% from last year. And recall that for about two and a half straight years, we had a decline as a result of the pandemic. And we've, from that point, moved up and up and up. And my hope is that we've seen the bottom, and now we're moving on the way up every single semester. And we've got about, Vice President Diamond, about two more weeks?
Week and a half.
Week and a half left before the census date. I also want to update you trustees on the good work that's happening with the Southeast Michigan Student Success Center. The Building Insight Committee of your board met several times, well, once, twice, as we reviewed the proposals for an architect. That architectural process went through a pretty rigorous process, and I want to thank my colleagues who served on that committee. The most important role of it was the person who led it, which was Dan Murray. I don't see Dan yet. Yeah, Mr. Murray's there in the back. But it was a lot of work for everyone who was on that committee. That was John Setkowsky, Jane Sekularis. Of course, Mr. Murray was on the committee, Reuben Brookley, Holly Diamond, Brad Romans, Michael Nealan, Denise Pichet, Lori Gonko, Tony Perry, and President Rader from Local 1650. Of course, your Building Insight Committee is led by Mary Petlicoff, and also on that committee is your colleagues, trustees Thorpe and Watts. We did select a firm. We recommended that to the board. You were gracious enough to see that recommendation at your P-12 meeting and unanimously selected that. So thank you for all the work that you all put into that and all the colleagues that I just mentioned, the majority of whom are here. Thank you for that hard work. And if you weren't aware, Mr. Murray, how many proposals did we get? Full proposals? Fifteen?
Yeah.
Fifteen. And they were not short. And none of those people I just mentioned have any lack of work, but they got through that. And thank you, board members, for approving that. Stan Tech will be the architect who will help us design that building. And I'm just really excited about the next step, which is an RFP that's already gone out for the construction firm. I shared that with you all. And we've got a committee who will be evaluating those proposals also. And then even more collaboration thereafter will be multiple ways, community members, those being students, staff, and community members. And of course, trustees can give input on what the building should look like and what functions it should have. We'll also plan to have some open town hall-type formats for community members and staff to have an opportunity to hear and give feedback about what that building will look like. And our hope is to have the construction firm for you as a proposal in October for your board meeting. In your packet, I've also given you some information about what the Michigan government is calling the Community College Guarantee. That's one more, and you'll start to lose count. But there are multiple free college programs in the state of Michigan. And it's another step in the positive direction. Of course, this relates to individuals who graduated from high school 15 months or less ago, and those who are enrolling full-time at their local community college will have tuition and fees paid for. We're tracking how many of those students we will have. I met with the leader of the Michigan Department of Lifelong Education Advancement and Potential, MyLEAP. I met with that person, who happened to be a community college president just two months ago, who now is working as a director of MyLEAP. That's Beverly Grefia Walker. And she, you'll be happy to know, was doing a tour explaining how community colleges are doing in getting students enrolled in these financial aid programs. And she said that Henry Ford College was at the top of the list for getting students aware of and enrolled in these programs. This new Community College Guarantee is, like I say, new, so it's been hard to implement quickly, but our financial aid and advising team has been working very hard. And I'm excited to see what kind of enrollment we'll have as we go forward with that. I have one more update, and then I'll take any questions before we invite our guest presentation. So you all know that Vice President Clark has announced her retirement, which has been a bittersweet thing for us. Her last day will be at the end of October, and we've been working hard at trying to find someone not to fill her shoes, but to take on the big, big role that she has carried so well. My hope is to, trustees, have something for you as an update and potential proposed selectee for that at your next board meeting. And at the state of the college, I announced several retirees who were leaving the college, and Ms. Clark was one of those people. But I will say, she's going out with quite a bang. I think we'll now call August Amy's August, because not only is it Amy's birthday in August, she now claims, we won't say grandmother, but she has grandchildren, two of whom were born in her month of August. And what better way could someone have to go off into retirement for not to take care of, but to just relish in the family planning that made two grandchildren in your month, Amy? Amy's August. So trustees, if you, one other major retirement I wanted to bring to your attention was Lynn Borzon, who has been at the institution for almost 40 years. She's announced her retirement also. Of course, I could go on and on, but I know that you all would not prefer that, and my staff would not prefer that. So I'll stop and answer any questions. And if, once the questions are done, Mr. Chairman, I'll introduce our guest presentation.
Trustee Thorpe?
I know this is a recent announcement about the free community college, but I'll assume that the college is starting to do some type of study as to what this could do for the capacity of our campus to bring in new students, and what we can maximize on our property.
Yeah, we are doing that, and I'm hopeful and cautiously optimistic. The one thing I will say that is a limiting factor is that this is limited to full-time students who have just graduated from high school or in the last year and a half have graduated from high school. And full-time, as you know, is not a majority of our students. In fact, it's a minority of our students. So we will continue to advocate that the state legislatures see this free college program as both wise and good, but a little smaller in the pool of affected students than we would prefer. Most of our students have obligations outside of our campus, whether it be a job, or a family member, or both. But if we can show that there's real value to the community for the full-time students, my hope is that it'll expand. Not unlike what we saw, trustee Thorpe, with the first free college program, which we saw was for folks working on the front lines during the pandemic. Then the government came and said, that was a good idea. We're going to give this to citizens 25 years or older. Now we've moved it back to 21-year-olds or older. So we're slowly but surely getting more and more students. But my hesitation, trustee Thorpe, is that to get the full benefit of this, and we have several, hopefully hundreds, but they have to be full-time students.
Trustee Petlicoff?
Well, I would just like to add on to that, because I think we need to remind everyone and be mindful of the reason community colleges exist at all. And they were to serve those students who couldn't be full-time students for the most part. They're coming here to us with a variety of backgrounds that they selected a place where they could be comfortable and be able to navigate an opportunity with, while managing their home lives and all the degrees of needs that they have there. And you are right. I think the vast majority of students who come here, come here exactly because they don't need to be a full-time student in order to get any benefits from attending class here, but can still take advantage of a college education in a different style than a traditional four-year institution. So we need to be mindful of that when they put these programs together to remind them what the whole purpose was for community college. And it was to give those students an opportunity.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The one thing I neglected to note that I do want to note is in your packet, we have a financial spreadsheet that updates you on the closing of the budget from last fiscal year. Now, as I kind of hinted at, I'm going to invite my new colleague, Jesse Mason, to the podium. And as he's making his way up there, I want to introduce you and tell you a quick anecdote about him. Go ahead. Mr. Mason is somewhat new to the college, and I've interacted with him several times, and I've always enjoyed it. But then I got an invitation from him to make an introductory speech to a group of folks who had come to Henry Ford College to learn about the work that Professor Mason has been working on, but also to allow Henry Ford College to take part in some national research. And what I was so excited to see was that this group that was cultivated by Professor Mason was from several other institutions who were here only because of Professor Mason. And if you haven't had a chance to meet him, you'll learn that he's got a passion for a lot of the basic understanding of our mission that trustee Petlicoff just announced, but also has an interest in expanding Henry Ford College's visibility and footprint. And one of the things that I'm sure he's going to use to do that is the project that you all passed to support and upgrade to some of the technology in the planetarium, but also to help what I think I heard in some of the questions you asked last time we discussed this, which is, are we making our community aware of the planetarium, and how's usage, and what, if anything, you all trustees can do? So I will say, Professor Mason's going to give you some comments about that. He's a really great colleague and a great guy to interact with, so I encourage you to ask any questions you have of him when his presentation is over. But also, he and I are both here to ask you, please serve as our ambassadors. Please take what you learned tonight and any other questions you have and filter it throughout the institute, throughout the community, because we're better off when you ask individuals who you know in your social networks to come to campus. When you come to this campus, you realize what a public resource it is, and what wonderful public servants like Mr. Mason work here and do the educational work that we are so proud to support. So with that, Professor Mason, I appreciate you making time, and the floor is yours.
It's a pleasure to be here. First, I should address all the compliments you've been giving me and tell you that it truly is, it takes a village to do the kinds of projects that we're undertaking. And I could not do this, though I get a lot of these accolades. I could not do this alone without the support of the administration here. None of this would be possible. So we really appreciate the continued support that we're being given. I'm delighted to tell you more about the planetarium and answer any questions you may have. Let me give you first a quick introduction to our planetarium, if you've yet to be there. We have a planetarium that seats 38 comfortably. It's not quite as big as, say, Wayne State's planetarium, but it is very adequate for our purposes at the college. And it also serves the community, as I'm going to tell you more about. Our planetarium runs off of a central projector known as a star ball. This is a workhorse that was developed in the 1960s, and though modern technology has given us digital projectors, no digital projector can touch the resolution that this star ball provides for the planetarium. So that's why we retain this one. The warped media projector is the thing that affords us the ability to project images across the entire dome, not just stars, but images of planets and galaxies. And that is one of the items that we were requesting funding for, to update. This is what the planetarium looks like. In the center, you'll see that beach ball thing. That's the star of the show, so to speak. That's our star ball. On the right-hand side is the warped media projector, and on the left-hand side is the control center where the planetarian or planetarian presenter would present from. These are all the presentations that were given in the last scholastic year. The ones on the left were the presentations we did for the community, and the ones on the right are the presentations we did for our students. Now, there's not much, you can't see much there because it's so tiny, but let me pull out the vital stats. Roughly 1,000 community members came and visited us last year at the planetarium, and roughly the same number of students came to the planetarium for academic purposes. And as you can see in this picture, I occasionally do give some of those presentations, though we have a team of three other volunteers that do so for the community. There was a question about marketing at the last board meeting, and our outreach marketing is three-pronged. We first stick out sandwich boards for the students to see that there's a planetarium show coming up. Second, we maintain an email list of people that have come to the planetarium and would like to be invited back. It's just a reminder email. We have a show coming up. And third, we have flyers, which I'm about to distribute. These flyers are also distributed digitally, and the reach is not just on our campus, but throughout the community. When people register for the shows, one of the questions that they're asked when they're saving their seats for the shows is, how did you hear about it? And as you can see, the most popular place for them to learn about our shows is the college website. The shows that I just passed out to you are going to be on our college website in the next few weeks. Kurt will be adding those. And each of those shows includes a link for you to reserve your seats. We also have radio promotion on WHFR, as well as our instructors here that teach astronomy, either lecture or lab, they inform their students of those upcoming shows. And here's all the upcoming shows for the 2024-25 season. These are our public shows. These are shows that anyone in the community can come to. It's all ages appropriate. It lasts roughly an hour. And our planetarians love questions, so if you want to learn more about the universe, it's the best place to come in this city. And I'll take your questions if you have any.
Trustee Petlicoff?
Well, I was wondering most of the questions the last time. So I will tell you that I'm a member of a group in this city called the Federation of Neighborhood Associations. And every time I've brought up something that's going on at the college, they're like, they've never heard of it. And even though they've sat at the table for many years as well. How else can we help you? I mean, if I had a PDF of this that they could then share amongst their neighborhood relationships, it would have a wider range if you were interested. If you feel you hit your maximum capacity at each of these, then you may, you know, not want to engage larger groups.
We want to get out the word to anybody that wants to come to the planetarium. And Patty is happy to send you a PDF if you're interested in sharing it with your community. Absolutely. I've been, since I took over directorship of the planetarium two years ago, I've been doing my best to maximize publicity for this without any budget to do so. The result is quite good. I'll say that there was a bit of a learning curve. This is the first time I've ever run a planetarium. The way we handle reservations is tricky, and I learned this out really quickly, because anything free goes quick, and if it's free, people don't show up because they didn't pay anything for the tickets. So it's a tricky thing to try to book a full house. And what we're running right now is roughly 2/3 full to full capacity for most of our shows.
And is that mostly through the reserved seating process, or do you have people waiting at the door?
We have never, we have never turned anyone away from a show. No. And likewise, we've never filled every single seat in the house, with the exception for the shows we do for, like, Cub Scouts or elementary schools or whatnot. I'd say we're mostly satisfied with the attendance we're getting, but we want people in the community that haven't heard about this to hear about this and come. The types of shows that we do, as you see on the list, are seasonal shows. So if you've came, if you come to our fall show this year, our fall show next year is going to be the same show. These shows that, these seasonal shows that we are showing are a little bit aged, and the updates, we're going to get to the planetarium, are going to afford us to program new shows that are more appropriate for, I would say, the modern age.
Okay, and then I'll have one last question then. Have you partnered with the city at all? Put these in the library? Put them at the Performing Arts Center?
Nope.
Put them, I mean, that's a way to connect with the community, and it's a different community.
I have considered flyering like that, grocery stores and libraries and stuff. And the only reason I haven't done that yet is the amount of time involved. The amount of time that I'd have to spend doing on that, I spend in a different trajectory. But as you noticed, I passed out extras, so if you know anywhere that you can hang one, I'd invite you to do so. Or if you know anybody that would be interested in coming to a show, share it with them.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes, I have seen a couple of the seasonal shows, but it's been quite a while. But I noticed here how it's really made in the story of space and time. Can you kind of give us an offer that we would expect from those types?
Sure. These shows are more, though they may incorporate some of the planetarium's star projection, those are more presentations on space. So how it's really made is ultimately a discussion of stellar evolution and how everything you see here is a result of stars that have lived and died. The story of space and time is the story of how we came to understand that space and time are not a static entity, but rather a dynamic one that changes in the presence of mass and energy, and how it led to us understanding that our universe had a beginning.
Trustee Moses?
I was going to ask about field trips by our elementary schools at the DPS level, if they're utilizing the planetarium.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I don't know the number offhand. I could pull it back up, but it'd be too tiny to see. We saw, I'm guessing, something like a half dozen elementary schools, middle schools, come to our planetarium last year from this community.
Trustee Thorpe?
So do we reach out to all the elementary schools in the area then to let them know that this is available?
I don't have a direct network for doing so, though last year I used, I did come across that network when I was publicizing the STEM Family Day that I was in charge of. So I hadn't thought about that yet. I could advertise the opportunity to bring the students here. One drawback to that is most of those schools would be coming during the day. And currently, I have one planetarian that can do it during the day. The other two work in the daytime. And I typically have a full load during the day, so my opportunities to support those schools are somewhat limited until about May.
We have Ms. Fatni Alfaraj in the room. She's representing Dr. Malakal, if you want to connect with her.
Okay.
She's in the back.
She's one of our second directors for the P-12.
She's a good contact to have to the public schools.
Can I just follow up with one quick question?
Of course.
Do you give a descriptor then as of what these are, so that people know what chances they can expect, and don't go in and...
Precisely. Once Kurt...
...with alternative that they thought they were going to be.
Yeah, once Kurt publishes it on the website, there will be a description along with identifying who's presenting that day.
Okay, thank you.
And the presentations on that calendar are all given by our NASA Solar System ambassadors.
I just wanted to thank Professor Mason for doing this and all of this work. And I know that he'll continue partnering with Dean Gililand on how the support staff within the school of STEM itself can begin to help make these linkages, and will work very closely also with Vice President DeLong. But the biggest challenge with reaching some of the audiences, that you are correct, we would love to do more of, is that they're in school during the day, we're in school during the day. And so actually, astronomy is a very popular choice among college students for satisfying their Michigan transfer agreement requirements in lab science. I will share also that, you know, our ability to move to better, more recent shows that we can do in our uniquely equipped environment will stop us, maybe for excusing the fact that, you know, Pluto got kicked out of the solar system. So I mean, let's make sure that the planets that we're showing are actually allowed to be in the sky. So that gives us that opportunity. I also hired this man because besides myself, we're about the only two people remaining who know how to actually tie our own bow ties. And this is probably not the best time to drop on him, but with the planetarium and observatory that we had at Lansing Community College, we used to host concerts by our rock bands inside the planetarium, two star shows that were done by our students. The size of our place, it would probably be, you know...
String quartet.
Yeah, it'd be a little bit more like, yeah, string quartet. But I just met in my own class today a student who is coming here, who has a very strong interest in science, but loves music. And I said, come with me. We have to find Mr. Mason.
Can I write a score to the...
I already have him on. Yeah. He's working with Professor Morrell.
Yeah, for what it's worth. The show that I'm preparing to program for the upcoming updates, we've already started rehearsing. I'm a musician as well. I've started rehearsing with Steve Morrell and Anthony Lai and Brad Romans. He's a fantastic drummer. And we're going to be providing the music for the new show.
Wow, that was...
If that doesn't get you excited enough, let me tell you what the, one of the updates is going to allow us to do in the planetarium. It's going to allow us to turn the planetarium into a spaceship that can travel anywhere in the universe, so we can take you to these things and talk about them.
They might get home in eight months.
I think they actually go to one of the Pink Floyds and one of the Led Zeppelin shows.
Was that here?
No, it was not.
Okay.
We can do a whole Dark Side of the Moon thing.
Yeah.
I think Cranbrook is the area. Because I've been to Cranbrook, where they did have music shows along with...
I don't think we're going to be doing rock music.
No, it was a long time ago.
Trustee Watts, you had a question?
So just one or two points. So number one, just upon doing a Google search, it's not coming up. So there's something to look into, maybe with our...
The planetarium is not coming up?
It's not coming up. So one thing I think that would be an easy, so just looking up planetariums near me, it's not popping up. But I think there is many sites that would be advantageous if we do register the planetarium on there. So that's number one. And number two, just with having a planetarium of that size, I think being able to have a night where we had a sensory-free, a sensory night for those students with disabilities, because a lot of times I think parents probably will not bring their child to a planetarium. I think targeting, not targeting, marketing it so because of the size, I think you have a very nice intimate setting that parents would probably be more willing to come and bring their child, knowing that it's a... bring their child, knowing that it's a safe environment with a sensory, with a smaller theater.
That's a really interesting suggestion.
So those are just two, two quick points.
Thank you. I like both of those suggestions.
That's a great idea, yeah. Well, thank you very much, great presentation.
It was my pleasure. Thank you for having me.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next item.
Mr. Chairman, if I might just quickly, I just want to congratulate Professor Mason for a $20,000 grant that he sought and obtained for our college. And just really quickly, at the State of the College, I said a few things that I want trustees to hear, and they're complimenting my colleagues, particularly those union leaders. One is Eric Rader. I think I see him three rows back. Yep. Dr. Rader has been selected to co-chair the AFT's Higher Education Program Policy Council, which is a national post for him. Dr. Boza, who is the president of AFO, and I think I saw her.
Yeah, she's there.
She very recently played a pivotal role when the administration at your college and some faculty members were having the potential for a conflict, but in her really effective way to handle that, she was able to get us to a place where the conflict actually turned into a learning opportunity. I could tell you more details, but it wouldn't be fair to have those involved, except for Dr. Boza, who played a pivotal role. Joni Morris is the president of SSA. She's right there. And trustees, you saw her at your P-12 meeting, but I'll just say, there's no, there's no way that the new contract for SSA members would be done, much less be as good as it is. A real improvement for the lives of these people who are in the front lines. They're the ones keeping this campus clean and safe and food made and administrative supports. Joni nearly did this by herself, and her members should know how, what a great job she did. And then Joe Zicknick is the president of Local 71. He wasn't at the State of the College, so he didn't get to hear me say this, so this is the first time I can say it to him. There were two occasions in the last two months where the college experienced what were essentially crises in IT. One was the failure of CrowdStrike to make its update work, in fact crashed our system. And then a second was a phishing attack on our, on our student email system. And both of those were difficult, but both of those were to good results and in some, one instance, an excellent result as a result of the fast and hard work and expertise by both Joe, his team, and his ability to communicate even to a president on vacation while camping. So all four of those people are leaders on our campus, and I want them to know that this board, at least I take the liberty of speaking on behalf of the board, that we all so much appreciate. I'm sorry, I spoke way too long tonight, but it's the beginning of the semester and I'm excited.
It's good to be excited. Thank you very much.
Discussion items. Authorization for issuing bonds for the Southeast Michigan Student Success Center, SEMSSC Board Report Number 4751. Vice President Sackowski.
Trustees, I asked Vice President Sackowski to make a few comments to you. The board report that I circulate, that my office circulated to you was quite long, but there's a shorter board report in your packet. And Mr. Sackowski, you can come to the podium and make a few comments about that. This is only a discussion item, Mr. Chairman, but it is one that I'm sure you're interested in.
Good evening, everyone, and glad to be here, even though I'd be here than out there. Let's just put it that, that way. This is one of the steps in making the $85 million, $90 million SEMSSC building a reality. So first step was with the architects, as President Cavalluna mentioned. Next step is to have in front of you in October, the construction manager at risk recommendation. They're meeting tomorrow to get a tour of campus from 10 to 5:00. And then once they provide their proposals, we'll go through the review, just like we did with the architects, to make a recommendation for them. But we have to pay for this in some way, shape, or form. So the idea is, in the spreadsheet that I put in your, in your packet, I can call it up if need be, it's for the financing of the project at $85 million. The resolution calls for a borrowing up to $45 million. We're anticipating borrowing $40 million is what we're doing. So the funds associated in the board report that I have, that I have given to you and is front of you is that if we would go for the full $45 million, $45 million would come from the bond proceeds, another $14.2 million from the state of Michigan, $10 million of that was the light item category that was given to us last year in Lansing. We believe we're the only college that received that kind of an award, thanks to our president. And then also $4.2 million that came through this year for capital purposes, which we can use for the building of that as well. So that's sitting in a planned fund for that. So that's $14.2 million. In addition to that, $6 million is being sought from Wayne County. We're working on that, getting them the paperwork associated that they need. And then $16 million, as gave us the authority for the millage a number of months back, where $16 million for eight, over eight years, $2 million a year will go into that, leaving $8.8 million coming out of reserves. So funding-wise, that's the way the cash flow report that I provided to you shows. By the end of the retirement of the bonds, we would have spent out of our general fund around $6 to $7 million over 35 years. So the rest of it is based upon retirement of other bonds, such as the Science Building, which is next door here, and any of the other ones that come to fruition. Those funds are freed up as a transfer and then can be used to cover the project. So our resolution for tonight, we have PFM, who's, none of you may have known Paul Stotter, who was, who has been a graduate of Henry Ford College, just retired, but his firm has done work for us in previous years, most recently with the Energy IEMP bond and also for P-12 and talking with Tom Wall on that as well. And the legal firm, Miller Canfield, James Crowley worked with us and did the work on the Energy Bond and prior work as well, and has also done work for the P-12 district. So we felt they did such a great job. All their fees are tied to specific parameters that the state has, has set up, so the need to do comparisons was, wasn't necessary because of the way in which the state has the bonding fees associated with the project. So with that, if anybody have any questions with regards to where we're at at this point?
Any questions? Trustee Moser?
So this item will come for approval next meeting, correct?
Yes.
And we will have, will we have the percentage of the interest rate in there or?
No, not at this point. We are just.
Determine at the time of.
At the time of. We will get that once we initiate the process. There's quite a bit of work to do prior to that. Financial statements, since we're tied in with P-12, they will want information from both the district and from the college, just like we've done for every other bond, bond item. But this is just initiating the process to give the PFM and also the legal council the authority to proceed and go forward.
Trustee Thor.
So the interest rate won't be determined until they're issued, which will be much further down the road.
Yes.
What assumption was being made for the interest rate?
We talked to them, and we're, and based upon what things are tracking right now and those that have been issued, we're talking around four to, four to 4.2%.
Thanks.
Next item, action items. Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who have submitted a blue card by 7:10 p.m. to the secretary may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate any immediate response for their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or college employees. Please limit comments to three minutes. If during those three minutes, the comments become personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant, your public comment time may be interrupted or ended. We have one blue card. Thomas Trimble would like to come to speak to the board about campus zero-scaping, representing himself.
Good evening, all. My name is Thomas Trimble. I'm a resident of the city. And my family and friends and neighbors, we spend a lot of time on the Greenway Trail at the back of campus. And I have watched with great interest the native landscaping or zero-scaping project over the last few years. I tracked down the folks here at the college who have kind of worked on that program just because I was very curious and very interested. And I just come before you tonight with my gratitude and appreciation. I think it's fantastic, especially during the height of the blooming season this summer. It was amazing. That whole area, all of the areas that have been transferred from sodded or just grassed area into native landscaping were just humming with pollinators, birds, amphibians. So, you know, in addition to, I just find it sort of aesthetically pleasing, my argument is that it's great for the environment, it's great for the river, it's great for the city. I think it's great for campus. I know other people have talked about it and say, what was happening over there? It looks just fantastic. So anyway, I just think it's super forward-thinking and it just, in terms of the brand of the college and in terms of, you know, its position within the city and the region, I just think it's fantastic. So, and I would encourage the P-12 system to think about how it might take that initiative and maybe apply it to other pieces of property in the P-12 system. But I'm really just coming forward with a thank you. I think it is just fantastic. So anyway, thanks very much.
Thank you for sharing, Tom. Appreciate it.
And it's definitely nice to hear, Thomas, that we didn't fire the landscapers. If this was intentional.
Are there any action items on this agenda which board members or the president wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below, from the, I'm sorry, from the action below. Recommended action, move to approve action items numbered one through six as recommended in this agenda.
Support.
Motion moved by Trustee McDonald, supported by Trustee Petkoff. Are there any questions or discussion on any of the items? Are there any objections to the motion? Hearing none, please attach a unanimous vote in affirmative. Next item, please.
Board of Trustees Business Acknowledgements of Correspondence.
Next item.
Board Committee Reports.
No policy.
Trustee Moser, please.
Policy committee met before this meeting, and we reviewed multiple policies from which are the tuition fees and refunds policy, the missions, values, and beliefs policy. We also reviewed the Citizens Advisory Committee and multiple older policies such as facilities planning, campus maintenance, and residency language that we had to include for students from federated states. There were also policies that we reviewed that will be rescinded and will be presented next meeting.
Good, thank you. Anybody else? Trustee Watts?
Oh, yes. Yes, just wanted to give you an update. Back in February, I attended the Association of Community College Legislative Summit in Washington, D.C. It was there years ago that I met the current Vice President of Public Policy for ACCT, Carrie Warwick Smith. Three years later, I was able to introduce her this past, past month at the Michigan Community College Association. I am sitting as their vice chair, so I was able to introduce her during our awards ceremony. So came full circle. I believe I met her years ago when she was day six on the job. So it was a nice, a nice way to commemorate everything that she has done for ACCT. And then also in May, I attended the Mackinac Island Policy Conference. So it was just a continuation of relationships that we've established both at the state and the federal level. So those are the three things that I have done so far this year. So helping support community college and also advocating for the free college tuition and hopefully an expedited FASSA form right now that I know a lot of our students are struggling with. And at the state level, several of our associations are asking us to help reach out to let our students know about the free tuition and the requirements of filling out FASSA.
Okay, thank you for the update. Next item, please.
Next item, request for information and our future agenda items.
Trustee Petkoff.
I already discussed this with President Cavalluna at the State of the College, and I just thought I'd see if everyone was amenable to it. The strategic plan is going to be updated within the next couple of months. They're putting together a committee and a team to do it again. They're going to use what's existing and tweak it, so to speak, just like we do with the P-12. And I suggested that he do the presentation kind of similar to what he showed at the State of the College, to the board members here.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
None.
Trustee Moser?
Go ahead. As far as right now with all of these programs coming in, such as the, the current program from the state to cover students who have graduated in the last year or so, I'd like to know if we can get a quick report as far as students who are still paying tuition without help or without getting support from the federal or the state. So students who are paying out of pocket, pretty much. And it could be saying just the rough numbers, it doesn't have to be extensive.
Very good. Anybody else? Next item, please.
Board Member Commentary. I wanted to add that with the Association of Community College Trustees, something that they have decided to do through MCCA, the Michigan Community College Association, knowing that many of us cannot attend the professional development last year in December, they had reached out and asked if we would like to come to, I believe they had a one-day professional development day. That night, we had a P-12 meeting. My understanding is that this year in December, we will not have a meeting, but I was asked to make, to share that with everybody. So that would be the equivalent of what we have for the P-12 MASP training. So I'll reach out and forward those invitations when that comes through. And also SEMCOG has reached out and asked that I also share information for their meetings going forward as well. So be on the lookout for those two communications from you.
Great, thank you. I have something to share. I was at the Welcome Center again last week, twice, in effect, and I just have to keep operating. I mean, the job that everybody's doing over there. People walk in, they're feeling welcomed, feeling the warmth. I mean, at first, until one of the security guards, security personnel recognized me, they didn't know who I was, but people walking up, how can we help you? I didn't get any names this time, but it was definitely the Testing Center and Advising Center. Phenomenal, phenomenal. Anybody else? Next item, please.
Next item, future meeting dates. Monday, September 9th, 2024, P-12 Board of Education Meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Service Center in the French Franchise Board Room. Monday, September 16th, not my birthday, 2024, HFC Board of Trustees Policy Committee Meeting, 6:00 p.m. at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Cabinet Conference Room. And Monday, September 16th, 2024, HFC Board of Trustees Meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom.
Yeah, I think you have a good night, everyone. You are adjourned.